Today, and he said when he pulled out, his truck was covered with ice and my car was too. But the surface was fine, even quarter steel road was fine.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Public hearings to start off the night with. Open the public hearing with regards to the two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding. This time I'm going to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing, Green County, two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on the submission of Green County Community Development Block Grant, CDPG application to the New York State Office of Home to the Community Renewal OCR for a grant of funds to implement our Micro Enterprise Assistance Program. Green County wishes to obtain the views of residents, public agencies, and other interested parties regarding community needs prior to the submission of the Micro Enterprise Assistance Program application. Green County anticipates one or more applications that utilize CDPG funds administered by the New York State Office of Homes and Community Renewal OCR. The CDPG program requires that the county conduct a public hearing in advance of the approval of applications, and residents are encouraged to submit comments and suggestions on the utilization of the CDPG eligible program funds. Comments and suggestions may be directed by email to planning@discovergreen.com or via mail to Green County Planning and Economic Development, Suite 419, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, 12414. Said public hearing will be held on Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six twenty P M in the Green County Office Building, fourth floor, Legislative Chambers, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, at which time all persons interested in the subject matters thereof will be heard concerning the scene. Tammy Ellis Shavillo, Court Green County Legislature.
Daniel? Purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public with regards to the two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding. I would just ask if you wish to speak, state your name for the record. With that, we'll begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to be heard in regards to the two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding? James here, Lawrence here. If you'd like to clarify here.
I've been answering any questions. James gave us summary of the program and the application at the committee meeting. And as far as I know, we have not received any written comments regarding the micro enterprise application.
Okay, so again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the two thousand twenty-three Community Development Watch Grant Program, Micro Enterprise Assistance Program and Project Funding?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. One of my constituents had asked, how much is available? And is there a maximum amount that can be requested?
It's a competitive grant application. We submitted a pre-application. We've been invited to submit a full application. It is competitive. The micro enterprise program has a maximum of twenty-five thousand dollars per eligible business, and there is a ten percent equity requirement.
And as far as how much is available, it's not like the county was given, for example, two million bucks?
No, there's not a specified right amount. It's based on need and demand in the application. And James might be able to speak again to what the dollar amount is in the application.
The county is able to apply for three hundred thousand dollars totally to benefit. But with the equity conclusion from the applicants, the total ask and total project cost, the total project cost to OCR is just over three hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. I think it's three hundred twenty-eight, three thirty-four, to be exact.
Gotcha.
That'll be totaled out in or approximating fifteen different applications at twenty-five thousand dollars each. Actually, I don't know about that.
But somebody could apply for hypothetically twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, up to, I think the minimum is twenty-five hundred, the minimum is either twenty-five hundred or five thousand, up to twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we've run many micro programs. So when we're awarded, we will, notice is in the paper. There'll be an application process. We'll let businesses know of the availability of funds. And of course, any businesses in any of the legislative districts where you may receive contacts, please refer them to James, and we'll describe the process and go through the eligibility.
I totally will. I just stayed avid today. I honestly don't know. I don't want to give you a mistruth, but I'll ask.
Great question.
Anyone else? Done? I will close that hearing. Now, six twenty-five, and move to the next one. I would like to open the public hearing with regards to the two thousand twenty-three New York State CDPG Program. This time I'm going to read the notice of public hearing.
Notice of public hearing, Green County, two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Program. Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Green County's Community Development Block Grant, CDPG, obtaining the views of residents, public agencies, and other interested parties on the community development needs of Green County and to discuss potential applications from the county for eligible CDPG two thousand twenty-three program funds, including consolidated funding applicants and open round economic development and micro enterprise projects. Green County anticipates one or more applications that utilize CDPG funds administered by the New York State Office of Homes and Community Renewal OCR. The CDPG program requires that the county conduct a public hearing in advance of the approval of applications, and residents are encouraged to submit comments and suggestions on the utilization of CDPG eligible program funds. Comments and suggestions may be directed by email to planning@discovergreen.com via mail to Green County Planning and Economic Development, Suite 419, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, 12414. Said public hearing will be held on Wednesday, January eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, at six twenty-five P M in the Green County Office Building, fourth floor, Legislative Chambers, 411 Main Street, Catskill, New York, at which time all persons interested in subject matters thereof will be heard concerning the scene. Tammy Ellis Shavillo, Court Green County Legislature.
Okay, thanks, Daniel. Purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments from the public with regards to the two thousand twenty-three New York State CDPG Program. I would just ask if you wish to speak, state your name for the record. With that, we'll begin the hearing. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the two thousand twenty-three New York State CDPG Program? Again, is there anyone here this evening who wishes to be heard with regards to the two thousand twenty-three New York State CDPG Program? Hey, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending this hearing. This hearing without about one minute, at six thirty, we'll be able to start in the morning.
But that, if you keep still, we'll be able to get this. You look just changed.
He's much better looking.
Mike, you look your Mike Ryan.
Uh, the one sitting here. What's the word? Eridite? Is that the word? Eridite? I'm not sure.
It's called regular meeting number one for the year two thousand twenty-three to order, and ask everyone to please rise. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, all the members are present with the exception of legislators who wish.
And there's no objections or corrections to the minutes from the previous meetings. Public hearings from December fourteenth, along with the minutes of December fourteenth Legislative Meeting, as well as the minutes of the organizational meeting. I will declare those approved. I got a motion and a second to dispense with committee reports. Hobart, Martinetz, Hobart, thank you. There's no meeting correspondence this evening. Open the ready attendance.
Resolution number six twenty-three, authorization to pay claims moved by legislator Hobart, and I need a second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. You want to oppose? Harry?
Resolution number seven dash twenty-three, authorization to pay claims highway, moved by legislator Martinetz, and I need a second.
What are we, second? All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Harry?
Resolution number eight dash twenty-three, setting public hearing on local law, two thousand thirty, number one, two thousand twenty-three, a local law providing real property tax exemptions for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers pursuant to section four six six dash A of the Real Property Tax Law, moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislators Lake and Martinetz.
Like the second half of the sentence?
Three, two, please.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Resolution nine dash twenty-three, memorializing state representatives to introduce legislation for extension of sale of tax moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislator Rivera.
Second. Lennon? Roll call, please.
Legislator Blumer.
Yes.
Legislator Davis.
Aye.
Legislator Handle.
Aye.
Legislator Hobart.
Aye.
Legislator Lake.
Aye.
Legislator Lennon.
Yes.
Legislator Lucas.
Aye.
Legislator Rivera.
Yes.
Legislator Martinetz.
Yes.
Legislator Overbaugh.
Yes.
Legislator Dorrington.
Yes.
Legislator Tru.
Yes.
Chairman Linger.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we have nine thousand three hundred forty-eight point two zero ayes and one no, or two is the absent, and that is six hundred fifty-one points two zero.
Harry?
Resolution number ten dash twenty-three, requesting legislative assistance to extend municipal home rule legislation according to local share of working recording costs, moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislator Hobart.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Harry?
Resolution eleven dash twenty-three, Green County Legislature State Environmental Quality Review Act, SERA, notice of intent to ask the state agency sale of property on Main Street to the Village of Catskill and negative declaration, moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislator Overbaugh.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Harry?
Resolution number twelve dash twenty-three, Green County Legislature authorizing sale of county-owned property in the Village of Catskill, notice of intent to serve as state agency issuance of negative declaration State Environmental Quality Review Act, SERA, to by legislator, uh, Chairman Linger and seconded by legislator Davis.
Oh, oh, please.
Uh, legislator Davis.
Aye.
Legislator Handle.
Aye.
Legislator Hobart.
Aye.
Legislator Lake.
Aye.
Legislator Lennon.
Yes.
Legislator Lucas.
Yes.
Legislator Rivera.
Yes.
Legislator Martinetz.
Yes.
Legislator Overbaugh.
Yes.
Legislator Dorrington.
Yes.
Legislator Tru.
Yes.
Legislator Blumer.
Yes.
And Chairman Linger.
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we have nine thousand three hundred sixty-nine ayes and six hundred thirty-one absent which wants to be noted.
Harry?
Resolution number thirteen dash twenty-three, American Rescue Plan, Town of Greenville, moved by legislator Davis and seconded by legislator Lennon.
All favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number fourteen dash twenty-three, American Rescue Plan, Town of Lexington, moved by legislator Lake and seconded by legislator Overbaugh and Lucas.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose?
Chairman, I need to recuse myself from this, this vote. Back in December, I was asked to bid on this project, not knowing where it was coming from. I was awarded the bid on the twenty-ninth of December. I was a little bitter. There were three bidders, and we all had to put in a no collusion clause with our bids. I'd just like to recuse myself of this bid. Up there still, sounds like the normal process being followed. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number fifteen dash twenty-three, adopting annual investment policy, moved by legislator Davis and seconded by legislator Martinetz and Overbaugh.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number sixteen dash twenty-three, awarding insurance coverage, two thousand twenty-three, moved by legislator Hobart and seconded by legislator Davis.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Harry?
Resolution number seventeen dash twenty-three, authorizing contracts with Pure Clean LLC for janitorial services at various county buildings, moved by legislator Handle and seconded by legislator Hobart and
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number eighteen dash twenty-three, authorizing supplemental of a community development block grant application and the execution of related documents, moved by legislator Handle and seconded by legislator Blumer.
Second. Lemon? All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number nineteen dash twenty-three, authorizing purchase of LPR camera system, moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislators Blumer, Davis, and Handle.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty dash twenty-three, authorization to purchase emergency fire and law enforcement dispatch software, moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator Handle and Rivera.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty-one dash twenty-three, authorizing municipalities to participate in county highway purchases, moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislator Lake.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three, authorizing change orders number one through three necessary for the completion of the county, county road seventeen reconstruction slope stabilization town. Moved by legislator Dorrington and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty-three dash twenty-three, authorizing change orders number one and two necessary for the execution of the slope stabilization of county route two, Town of Cretsville, moved by legislator Dorrington and seconded by legislator Handle and Lemon.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the implementation of funding in the first instance, a hundred percent of federal aid and state work to sell a program aid eligible cost of a transportation federal aid project and appropriating funds thereof, moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislator Lennon.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-three, authorizing supplemental agreement number one necessary for the completion of construction inspection services for the rehabilitation of county road route twenty-three B bridge over the single hill been three dash three zero three two eight dash zero, Town of Carroll, ping one seven six zero point two four, moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator
Like the second.
True? Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty-six dash twenty-three, authorizing balancing change order necessary for the completion of the Kusakui transfer station, found of Kusakui contract number one A, general construction, moved by legislator Hobart and seconded by legislator Martinetz.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-three, authorizing change order number three of Kusakui transfer station reconstruction project, contract number one C, electrical construction, moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? That's Harry.
Resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty-three, authorizing purchase of one new two thousand twenty-three wheel loader, moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator Hobart.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number twenty-nine dash twenty-three, authorizing free maintenance department of food service and unlimited care, moved by legislator Blumer and seconded by legislators Handle by Lennon, Lucas, Rivera, Overbaugh, and Tru.
Second half, please. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number thirty dash twenty-three, awarding meat, canned goods, frozen supplies, and paper goods to Tinsberg, moved by legislator Overbaugh and seconded by legislators Blumer and Lucas.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number thirty-one dash twenty-three, authorizing contract, Green County Community Services Board and Twin County Recovery Services, Inc., and two thousand twenty-three budget amendment, moved by legislator Davis and seconded by legislator Handle.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number thirty-two dash twenty-three, authorizing memorandum of understanding Green County Public Health Department, caput charities of Columbia Green County's Healthy Families Fellowship, moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislators Hobart and Lennon.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose?
Resolution number thirty-three dash twenty-three, accepting minutes, Medical Professional Advisory Committee, Publicization Review Committee, from May and June quarter two, two thousand twenty-two, moved by legislator Davis and seconded by legislators Hobart and Tru.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number thirty-four dash twenty-three, authorizing out of state economic development tourism and planning, Kurt Gatcha, senior tourism marketing manager, moved by legislator Dorrington and seconded by legislator Handle.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number thirty-five dash twenty-three, authorizing out of state travel, Green County Economic Development Tourism and Planning, Kurt Gatcha, senior tourism marketing manager, moved by legislator Handle and seconded by legislator Dorrington.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number thirty-six dash twenty-three, authorizing out of state travel, Green County Economic Development Tourism and Planning, Kurt Gatcha, senior tourism marketing manager, moved by legislator Tru and seconded by legislator Handle.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number thirty-seven dash twenty-three, appointing member Green County Board of Ethics, moved by legislator Hobart and seconded by legislator Lake.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose?
Resolution number thirty-eight dash twenty-three, amending resolution number four thirty-nine dash twenty-two, appointing member to the Fish and Wildlife Management Board, moved by legislator Dorrington and seconded by legislator Lake.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number thirty-nine dash twenty-three, appointing member to the Fish and Wildlife Management Board, moved by legislator Dorrington, and I need a second.
Martinetz.
Mike. Rivera.
Yep.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number forty dash twenty-three, appointing public health director, moved by legislator Handle and seconded by legislators Blumer, Davis, Hobart, Lennon, Lucas, Rivera, Tru, and Chairman Linger.
Martinetz also.
Martinetz? Lake? Lake? Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number forty-one dash twenty-three, appointing member Columbia Green Road Force Development Board, moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislators Lennon, Lucas, and Overbaugh.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution forty-two dash twenty-three, authorizing obtaining and furnishing of assessment role-related services and materials, moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislator Overbaugh.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Blumer.
Anyone oppose? I might have them. Harry?
Resolution number forty-three dash twenty-three, authorizing obtaining and furnishing of election-related services and materials, moved by legislator Handle and seconded by legislator Overbaugh.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Oppose? Blumer oppose? Harry?
Resolution number forty-four dash twenty-three, authorization facilitate two thousand twenty-three annual village elections, moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislator Overbaugh.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Oppose? Blumer oppose? Contraries. Camera?
Resolution number forty-five dash twenty-three, amendment to Green County Fund Balance Policy, moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislators Rivera and Chairman Linger.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number forty-six dash twenty-three, establishing the Emergency Services Equipment Fund, moved by legislator Lake, Lennon, and seconded by legislator Overbaugh.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number forty-seven dash twenty-three, establishing the Departmental Vehicle Fund, moved by legislator Martinetz and seconded by legislator Lennon.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Harry?
Resolution number forty-eight dash twenty-three, establishing the Highway Equipment and Facilities Reserve Fund, moved by legislator Rivera and seconded by legislator
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? That's Harry.
Number forty-nine dash twenty-three, establishing the Real Property Tax Stabilization Fund.
Second. Second.
So that was moved by legislator Davis and seconded by legislator Blumer and now legislator Hobart and legislator Lennon.
And Linger?
Chairman?
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Harry?
Resolution number fifty dash twenty-three, establishing the Solid Waste Equipment and Facilities Reserve Fund, moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone oppose? Anyone opposed? That's carried. The non-meds funds that we just approved. When we close the books out for twenty twenty-two. Dollar amounts attached to these line items.
Resolution number fifty-one dash. Resolution number fifty-one dash twenty-three, budget amendment, Green County Economic Development Tourism and Planning. Big Valley Trail Breakers snowmobile club twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three. Moved by legislator Lennon and seconded by legislator Dorrington.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carry.
Resolution number fifty-two dash twenty-three, budget amendment, Green County Public Health Department and Health Research Incorporated. Epidemiology and laboratory capacity for infectious diseases. E L C for coronavirus COVID-nineteen. Provincial reopening schools. Moved by legislator Tru and seconded by legislator Davis.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carry.
Resolution number fifty-three dash twenty-three. Budget amendment, Department of Social Services Insurance Recovery. Moved by legislator Martinez and seconded by legislator Hobart.
Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's carried. See, and generally do have some unfinished business.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take from the table resolution number four-ten dash twenty-two entitled as amended. Seeker declaration and approving recommendations for including land into agricultural district number one twenty-four.
You have a second? Second. Second from legislator Lay. Favor?
Aye.
What opposed? That's carried. Moves two items on our off the table.
Mister Chairman, I'd just like to give a synopsis of where we've been since that meeting. Based upon the board's review of the recommendations of the Green County Agricultural and Farmland Protection Board. Their report on an annual inclusion in the Green County Ag District one twenty-four. Which was approved to be sent to us on November ninth, two thousand twenty-two. And it was submitted to us at our legislature meeting on December seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Based upon the presentation that we received from Green County Soil and Water Executive Director Joel DuVois. At that public hearing held on the twenty-first of December. Presentations of the public. At the public hearing on the inclusion of these parcels parcels in the ag district one twenty-four. On December twenty-first of the public hearing. We heard statements from the Wyndham Town Supervisor Thomas Voight. At that public hearing on December twenty-first. And we had a meeting and discussion at our Green County Resources Committee meeting. That was held on January fourth of two thousand twenty-three. During that presentation, we heard the current and future uses of that part, the first parcel. Ninety-seven point zero zero dash three dash thirty-seven. Which was the soil, Green County Soil and Water property. We heard about the nursery operations, the use of the parcel versus the total acreage. We were, we were shown photos of the agricultural use. Inclusive of planting, nursery stock, irrigation, et cetera. We saw boundary reviews, a future expansion of potential agricultural uses on the parcel. We also saw maps, aerial photographs, a plan for future agricultural development. DEC program information that was submitted by executive director Joel DuVois of the Green County Soil and Water. We also received material submitted by the town of Wyndham Town Planning Board and Town Board. We received the town of Wyndham Planning Board meeting minutes that were dated March seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two. Town of Wyndham Comprehensive Plan. A resolution from the town of Wyndham regarding the seeker negative negative declaration and adoption of the town comprehensive plan. Reviewing the Wyndham Resolution number twenty-five dash two thousand twenty-two. Regarding the grant application for preparation of the proposed zoning law. Which includes regulatory language related to agricultural uses. The town of Wyndham Town Board meeting minutes that were dated December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two regarding the local law number five of two thousand twenty-two. Opposing a temporary townwide six-month moratorium on site plan review. We also saw reviews of notices of violations and stop work orders relative to the second parcel. Which was ID number ninety-seven point zero zero dash one. Dash seventy-nine point one. Two hundred ten point four acres. Dated October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two and November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. And based on email correspondence directed to James Hannes, one of our employees in our economic development office today. But addressing the legislation by the applicant and owner of of that previous parcel that I mentioned ninety-seven point zero zero dash one dash seventy-nine point one. It's kind of a, just a little synopsis of where we've been and what we've heard and we've heard. You know, from our director of soil and water, that this is to be used for agricultural purposes. That was my concerning question that I had from the last meeting. So I would invite anybody else if I missed something from our, from our last meeting, for any further comments or discussion to be had. This is the time.
I just would like to add into the record that email that was sent. From Jordan Duquette. To your Mr. Glender and Broden. Unfortunately, we are out of the state at the moment and will be unable to attend another public hearing this evening. Not a public hearing for tonight. When we make the final decision on our inclusion in the ag district, who of our attendance? We'd like to submit people attached letters to be read aloud during the meeting incorporated into the record. And taken into consideration in regards to your decision. Thank you for your time and attention. This would be done at a public hearing, not so much in this format, but I don't want to not. Have this. Or direct. A vote. Or direct. Your honorary members of the legislature. We'd like to take this opportunity to respectfully respond to the objections raised by the residents of Maple Crest. In regards to our application to be included in the agricultural district of Green County. We understand the concerns raised, but we'd like to assure everyone that our application is based off of on our specific plans for the property, which include a diverse range of sustainable and creative farming methods. And and orchards, where we will grow a variety of fruits and nuts. Our vegetable operation where we will grow a range of seasonal vegetables. Farmer containers provided by a local company. And the top bill. These containers will allow us to grow food year-round and if successful, we plan to expand to ten acres on five acres. I believe this will be a valuable addition to the local agricultural. We understand that the residents of Maple Crest may have concerns about the impact of our farming operations on the local community. But we would like to assure everyone that we have the community's best interests at heart. Our intention is to provide fresh locally grown produce to the community. I mean, plan to distribute and sell our crops to local markets, restaurants, and farmers markets. We believe that this will not only improve access to help these people in the community, but also support local businesses. We'd like to remind everyone that the property has a long history as a farm and we are committed to continuing that tradition. We believe that sustainable agriculture is not only good for the environment, but good for the community. Importantly, our inclusion in the agricultural district is separate from the approval process. And qualifications required for us to be designated as a working farm and receive site plan approval. The determination of whether our farm is a working farm will be handled through appropriate processes and qualifications set forth by the county. We understand that there are specific criteria that must be met in order to be designated a working farm. And we are fully committed to meeting and exceeding those requirements. We plan to demonstrate our qualifications and committed to sustainable agricultural. Prevent site plan approval process. We will provide detailed information on our farming methods, crop plans, and environmental impact assessments to assure that our operations meet the highest standards. Additionally, we will work closely with the county's agricultural department to ensure that we are in compliance with all relevant regulations and guidelines. We understand that being designated a working farm is an important aspect of our application and we take it seriously. We want to assure everyone that we will do everything in our power to meet requirements that demonstrate our commitment to sustainable agriculture. We do believe that if we work closely with county officials, we can create a farm that is not only economically viable, but environmentally responsible. Yes, public opponents focus on facts and refrain from making any unfounded or irrelevant statements regarding our application. We would like to address any concerns or issues brought up. Like to address. Concerns brought up by opponents regarding that way, Oya, or any other location or irrelevant to our application. And not reflect any of our intentions. We welcome any distress to be back and forward working county and local officials. Create a sustainable and responsible agricultural operation. In conclusion. We would like to express our appreciation for the opportunity to address these concerns and we hope that our plans for the property have been made clear. We are committed to investing in the community and being a positive addition to the rich agricultural history of Wyndham. We believe our inclusion in the agricultural district gives a liquid situation for the community. We look forward to working with the board, legislature, and the residents of Maple Crest to make this reality. Certainly. That was the letter that was sent in. Well, that was a public hearing, but I concur with you that they had their side heard.
They have weeks that they knew this was coming up, that they could have sent this letter then, so this would have been like kind of back and forth dialogue. Like it's the eleventh hour and they're now sending this letter.
Don't disagree. I didn't want to leave it out of the record.
And we received it in our email, so we railed, we railed before our meeting tonight.
Well, I, I actually, I wasn't on my computer this late this afternoon, but it's still, we have weeks prior to tonight.
And we're following Robert Dules' orders of taking a motion from, that we tabled and put.
So as Matt mentioned, is there any other further comments or debate or discussion on either one of these?
Sure, I'll, I'll make the motion to include parcel ID number ninety-seven point zero zero dash three dash thirty-seven. Which is the Green County Soil and Water into the County Agricultural District number one twenty-four.
Motion. There's a second.
I will second that, but can I just add a little comment to my second, second ding ding? It's a tough word. I do believe that we were presented with all the criteria that would put them in the ag district, that they should be designated as such. I would though, Joel, I would like to see kind of a good neighbor thing happen. You know, I go along with this, but I would like to see that you take their concerns seriously. And just clean up that mess for them and let's, let's move forward from here and all be good neighbors, do what we say we're going to do. And listen to the people. So I will second that, with that caveat.
Okay. What else? Anyone in favor of that?
Aye.
Sir Matt, Linda, and Patty? Anyone else? Opposed?
Aye.
Thanks. One extension from Dorrington is on the board. I don't think we need to actually.
I swear on that.
Point until after the meeting.
Might just go down as a, as a no, so. And that does not pass.
About the second one, Matt?
Sure. The second one was, I'll make a motion to include. Parcel number ninety-seven point zero zero point one or dash one dash seventy-nine point one. This was the McLashlin Farm into the Green County Agricultural District number one twenty-four.
It's my motion to include. McLashlin Farm. I have a second. That does not have a second. Twice. Three times, that did not pass. Unfinished business items that we have. Anyone else have any other business that's come before the board?
Mister Chairman. As supervisor of town of Wyndham. I would just like to thank Paul Bosberg and Scott Templeton. For having transfer stations open on these busy holidays. It's really seeing the impact of the extra people up there. And having those stations open is a great success for the county. Thanks, Doc. I believe legislator Rivera has a memorial.
Thank you, Chairman. I do would like to adjourn our meeting this evening. For an Athens resident, Timothy Allen Albright Senior. Timothy Albright passed away peacefully at home on December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two after a brief illness. A lifelong resident of Athens, New York. Of a certainly very well-known to many in the Catskill community as well. He was predeceased by Elizabeth Conan Albright, his wife of fifty-three years. And is survived by his children, their spouses and grandchildren Nancy and Lee Commentiere. Children Ben, Elliot, Samuel, Leslie Albright, and Dan Puller. Marion, and Timothy Albright Junior. Tim Senior's family will be forever grateful for his friend Susan Mullino. Susan and Tim enjoyed travel and companionship during their time together. And I was able to spend a lot of time with them as well. And I know their family was eternally thankful to her for her continued devotion and selfless support of Tim during the final moments of his life. Tim graduated from Kuxaki Athens High School. And received degrees in applied sciences from Cobleskill College. Agronomy from Cornell University and a master's degree in elementary education from the College of St. Rose. He cultivated a lifelong interest in science, the weather, especially snow, we might be getting to. Learning and cooking, including Friday pizza nights at home with friends and family. And the occasional forays into homemade root beer and apple cider. Tim's first job was with the U.S. Department of Agriculture Soil Conservation Service as a soil mapper. He then began a teaching career in Kuxaki Elementary School, teaching there for one year. Before moving to the Catskill Central School District, where he taught fifth grade for thirty-four years. Making a positive impact on generations of students at Grandview Elementary School. And later retiring from Catskill Elementary School. He proudly worked as the first teacher to make Catskill students to the Olympics or Odyssey of the Mind. And attended countless parent-teacher organization and extracurricular events through the years. He was often greeted by former students with, Mr. Albright, do you remember me? Tim was involved with the local community his entire adult life. He was an active member of the Athens Volunteer Fire Department for more than fifty years. Serving as vice president from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty. President from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-nine. Treasurer from nineteen eighty-nine to two thousand two, and prolific photographer throughout. He was also proud to work on the committees to purchase three new fire trucks. He loved making pizzas with his firehouse family every Thursday night, as well. as well as making meals for countless drills, parades, and conventions through the years. After retirement, he delivered fire trucks throughout the eastern United States. His final effort with the Athens Fire Department, just a few weeks before his death, included hanging holiday lights in the village with fellow firemen. He served as Athens Village Trustee in the early nineteen-seventies and has been on the consistory of and member of the First Dutch Reformed Church in Athens and served on the cemetery board. Tim and his friend Susan were instrumental in restoring the church bells at that First Dutch Reformed Church in Athens, so their chimes may be heard throughout the community. As a young father during summer breaks from teaching, he loved working as a bus driver for Mountain View Coach Lines, painting houses with fellow teachers, and coaching his children's baseball and softball teams. He grew up on farms in Athens and Earlton, continuing his farming with backyard gardening and various home poultry endeavors. Tim loved to cut firewood, ski, and golf with his grandsons and friends, and he loved watching his grandsons play baseball. He remained an engaged community member throughout his life, from his frequent visits to the firehouse and church, to enjoying coffee every morning with friends, old and new. Tim was predeceased by his mother and father, Ruth and William Albright, stepfather Leonard Hoteling, and he survived by brothers Harry, Sue Ann, and Bill, Vida, brother-in-law Charles Conan, and cousins, nieces, and nephews. He encouraged people to contribute time and energy to their communities by volunteering at their local firehouse and by donating their time and expertise. And I couldn't think of a better person to end and adjourn our meeting with, to leave us with that message, as that's why we're all here, to volunteer our time and donate our time and our expertise to make our community a better place. So with that, I'd like to adjourn our meeting this evening in honor of Timothy Albright.
Second. Or second. Oh, board. Anything else for tonight?